Good evening, folks. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. Please excuse my voice. I apologize for sounding like a frog tonight, but I have had laryngitis. So that being said, would you please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Doug Lasbell.
Present.
Ed Uliberry.
Here.
Jordan Simo.
Present.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, pro tem any changes or additions to the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Thank you. At this time, this is one of the really fun times that we have at these meetings as we get to read and present proclamations and also the You Make a Difference Award that we started this year recognizing citizens who contribute to our community. Normally, I would read both of these, but because of my voice and because I know nobody wants to hear me, I've asked one of our student youth councilors, Jordan Simo, to join me, and she will present the proclamation and the award together, and she will actually do the reading. So with that, Jordan, would you join me up front? And I'll ask Kelly Thompson to please join us.
Okay, so this is for Hospice and Palative Care Month, November 2024. Whereas for more than 30 years, Hope West has been Montrose's community-owned nonprofit organization where people turn when facing life's most difficult times. And whereas, as a nationally-recognized hospice, palliative care, and adult bereavement and children's bereavement program, Hope West provided care to more than 3,838 in 2023. With every year, the need for Hope West services is growing. And whereas, every citizen can play a role in helping your neighbors by supporting the mission of Hope West through volunteer service and gifts. And whereas, this public declaration celebrates our community's unique spirit of helping each other every day and honors the compassion of the many nursing assistants, social workers, chaplains, physicians, counselors, registered nurses, and volunteers at Hope West. And whereas, Hospice and Palative Care Month presents a unique opportunity to increase awareness of these programs and honor all who make them possible.
Thank you. Kelly, thank you very much. We're more than pleased to do this on behalf of the city, and would you like to say a few comments?
Thank you very much. I would like to just thank our leaders and all the community members in this great city of ours for the amazing support that you offer to Hope West. We hit a record census this past week of 116 hospice patients. That is just in Montrose. So the need is great, and we are very honored to serve here, and thank you very much again for your support.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
The next award is the You Make a Difference Award. This is the award we started this year to recognize citizens in our community who really are the heart of our community, who make contributions, but people may not know about it on a day-to-day basis. And tonight, we are recognizing Sue and Mike Bussing for the You Make a Difference Award. Would you folks please come forward?
Sue and Mike Bussing. Kids Aid Assistance Low-Income Families by providing food for schoolchildren to take home on the weekends. Sue and Mike Bussing volunteer to run the Kids Aid program along with a group of dedicated volunteers who meet every week throughout the school year to pick up, organize, package, and deliver bags of food to the local schools. They're making a difference in the lives of children and their families every week. Sue and Mike dedicate their time and resources to make sure this program continues to help children and families. Without them, there would be hungry children in our community on the weekends throughout the school year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you for whoever nominated us, and thank you for the support that you've given Kids Aid. We ended last year serving 233 students, and this year, we're already up to 306 students each week. So the need has increased greatly, and we also would like to say thank you to our great group of volunteers who are overworking right now making bags while we're here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks again for doing this.
Moving right along on our agenda for this evening, the next item is the Call for Public Comment for Non-Agenda Items. Let me ask if there's anybody here to comment on non-agenda items. I see one hand. So with that being the case, I will read the disclosure language here before we accept the comment. The Call for Public Comment Agenda Item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Please refrain from any personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs, as they may be considered disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. With that, I will call on you, sir, to please come forward. Good evening to the board. Happy Voting Day. Everybody's aware of what happened on March 6th, 2024? As a refresher, this is a resolution that was passed by the Montrose County Board of Commissioners. A resolution declaring Montrose County as a non-sanctuary county, setting priorities and expectations in response to immigration influx. There are 17 wherashes. I won't go into each one of them, but as it ended, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Montrose that the Montrose County Board of County Commissioners declares that Montrose County is not a sanctuary county and will not open shelters or provide services other than emergency services to illegal immigrants that may arrive in unincorporated Montrose County. Montrose County will continue to prioritize the needs of our local citizens. It has been stated on various news media, news outlets, that the Montrose City Council has said, A, we are already a non-sanctuary city, and to date, there has not been any presentation of any bill or resolution or direction or anything in writing other than somebody's verbal opinion. What, and I also, it's been said that, what difference does it make? It doesn't make any difference. We've been reading that no matter what we say we are, it doesn't make any difference. I disagree. On that same month, March of 2024, 19th, we had over 400 people here in these chambers that were in the overflow saying, "We want Montrose to be non-sanctuary." Since that time, there has not been any information coming back from this panel to declare that we are or we are not, putting it in any kind of resolution. I don't see what the problem is. If it's something that says we can't do it, we need to know why we can't do it. If it's something that somebody's got an objection to, put it out there so that we can understand. But right now, the program that was put out for this year to be more open to the constituency of Montrose County has not happened. We're still in the dark. Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment? All right, we'll move on to item number eight. City Council Consideration of the Minutes of the October 15th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 15th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting as presented.
Second. There's been a motion and a second? And that motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 10. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2670. Excuse me, I'm ahead of myself. Item number nine, Ordinance 2670, second reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2670 on second reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, updating Title VI, Chapter I of the Official Code of Montrose, Colorado, repealing and replacing Title VI, Chapter I, Section 10, 6-1-10 regarding unauthorized camping, repealing and replacing Title VI, Chapter I, Section 12, 6-1-12 regarding sleeping on sidewalks, streets, curbs, parking spaces, alleys, public right-of-way, or within doorways prohibited and amending Title IX, Chapter 10, Section 1, 9-10-1 regarding park hours. And for presentation of this ordinance on second reading is Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Matt Magliero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the public present. I'm here on Proposed Ordinance 2670 on second reading. The ordinance proposal signed after unanimous passage on first reading appears on pages 25 through 32 of tonight's session packet. The packets are published online by the city clerk and are available to the public. For reference, the packet tonight includes the red line appearing on pages 17 through 24, as well as the staff memo on pages 14 through 16. Publication of tonight's second reading occurred on October 19th, 2024, in that edition of the Montrose Daily Press Classifieds. Proposed Ordinance 2670 was presented on a return to first reading on October 15th, 2024, wherein staff went through in detail both the ordinance, section by section, as well as its procedural history. For those wishing to review city council member comments, staff comments, and discussion across the six open meetings this has been discussed, all the work sessions and the regular sessions are recorded open meetings pursuant to the state's public open meeting law, and they are available to review over the Internet as well as the city of Montrose's YouTube channel. There have been no changes to the proposal between October 15th, 2024, at first reading and hearing, and tonight. I'd like to make a couple of comments on the staff level on the ordinance to the public, hopefully to offer some clarity to different areas. First, these are municipal ordinances of the city of Montrose. The city is a home rule city and is authorized by the State of Colorado's Constitution to legislate. That includes the ability to impose, enforce, collect fines and penalties for the violation of provisions of charter ordinance under Article 20, Section 6. The city in its charter acts by ordinance to establish any rule or regulation for which a penalty may be imposed, and this council, when it does so, is a legislative body. The city has long had legislation to regulate land it holds, and in these presentations, we've talked about how back to at least September 1988, the city maintained an ordinance enforceable with fines and jail penalties on conduct within city parks. That is being modified with this proposal tonight, should it pass. Violations of ordinance is written into the city's municipal court. They are not written into state court and any prosecutions handled by the city attorney's office for the city of Montrose. A comment was made last session about how passage will add burden upon the local district attorney's office. District attorneys and deputy district attorneys appear and prosecute alleged state criminal law violations in the state of Colorado District and County Courts. They do not prosecute municipal ordinances, and they don't practice law in the city's municipal court. Recent staffing issues in the news there have nothing to do with anything before this council tonight. Likewise, the regional office of the Colorado State Public Defender does not practice law in the city's municipal court. They represent indigent clients in the state court facing criminal charges, serving those clients, quote, "independently of any political considerations or private interests." It's from their Organic Act, CRS 211101. Six attorney members of that agency have addressed this council over the course of the past two regular sessions. When the head of that regional office asserted that there is not a rash of offenses that are happening in the parks that are coming into his office for intake for representation, that is true, as far as it goes. All of the instances of charged municipal ordinance violations, whether it be a trespass, a littering, a nuisance, a disorderly conduct, throughout the city limits, whether they happen in a park, on other public property, or on private property, which are about 1,000 cases a year seen by that court, charged in a municipal court are not seen by that office. We heard the last session from the head of that office that they made an Open Records Act for several parks. That is true, they did. It was by and through an office investigator using her state email address and using state funds from their office to pay for the request on a state credit card. The request listed 10 public parks, two of which are maintained by the Montrose Rec. District and not the city. As I explained in the first reading, there are 38 parks in the municipal system. The request missed 30 others. Despite that, we heard about 12 matters coded as, from the disclosures, as assaults or violent acts in the ones they did select in a 19-month timeframe. That's one every couple of months. That rate alone should be a concern in a city of 21,000 people that should expect to feel safe in the public parks. But setting that aside for a minute, a point has been missed here. From the presentations from Chief Hall and Jim Shide, our Public Works Director, on the cost to the city in personnel, in fees, in resources expended for the safe cleanup of this activity, the health and welfare impact of allowing camping in perpetuity on public and private lands, the jury-rigged traps and notes of threats left to our public works employees, and the attendant consequences to the environment, not the least of which are the now two fires we've had on public lands the last month alone. We've heard that this ordinance change is not necessary, as MC 9101B already makes it unlawful for persons to enter or remain upon the parks between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM. One of the elements of that offense is entering upon or remaining upon any of said city parks. Not all this conduct occurs on or about a city park. Unauthorized camping on private property without the owner's consent, like that depicted and shown appearing within the Colorado outdoors property, for example, does not occur in a park. There's a catch-all on city or city property, but there's no time specified when other city property, not a park, is closed, or the hours during which such property is open or closed, which is a hole in the ordinance as it's written now that the revision closes. The revision also describes, and as described, is broader in scope than the city parks with the definition of public property, which covers other city-held lands. It also covers private lands. At this point, I might endeavor to share my screen. It's off the, in an area off the San Juan bypass across from the Sunshine Peak Apartments. It's on the same side of the street as the new Village on San Juan project. This is not a park. There are no posted signage here on hours of closure. And MC 9101, as it's written now, is not chargeable for those staying here after dark. It is wrong as a matter of law to assert all the conduct we've shown in the first reading in these areas. Public and private property could be charged in MC 9101B as it's written now. And existing ordinances in our code do not reach the conduct of these encampment sites. Another assertion we've heard is that the police will reflexively cite this ordinance. If there's a tent, there's a ticket. Chief Hall stated enforcement of this ordinance will be with reference to a procedural on unauthorized camp cleanups that require written noticing in a period of 72 hours, three full days, to clean up the site and vacate the site. Some of those posted notices were on or depicted in the photos shown at the first reading. If that's done, if the site is cleaned up and vacated, that person doesn't get a ticket for camping. The ordinance itself makes reference to this procedural, quote, "substantially in conformance with the procedures of the Montrose Police Department related to cleanups of unauthorized camps." It's page 29 of the packet. It's MC 6110J, the last sentence of that. Second, some likely in reaction to photos like this have volunteered to, either on their own or as a group, clean up these sites. I'll say this. No law prohibits a civic-minded person or group from going into the parks or public lands at a time when they are open to the public to pick up trash. Nothing prohibits that. But I hasten to add here the distinction drawn by Mr. Shide from ordinary trash pickup on staff rounds, what he described as staff rounds, of trash, like food wrappers that people callously litter in the parks, and the literal tons of waste that we remove using construction equipment from an encampment cleanup. On September 11th, 2024, that camp and cleanup that involved multiple personnel of the city in half a day, that involved three tons of waste. One of the prior cleanups held earlier in this year, I'm advised, was closer to 15 tons. City staff have found it necessary to use medium or heavy equipment due to the volume that's depicted in the very background of this photograph. They're loading basically a front loader with trash. City staff have also found it necessary to wear appropriate PPE, like N95 or greater masks, puncture-proof gloves, and reflective vests, along with, they've received training on bloodborne disease, disease-spreading insects and lice, and hazardous material exposure like drugs and used drug paraphernalia. All personnel used personnel, personal protection equipment on September 11th during that cleanup. And as to some of the things discovered during that cleanup, that included several used needles, a makeshift bong out of a soda bottle, multiple items of tinfoil with scorch markings on them, multiple empty alcohol containers, probably about 1,000 or so cigarette butts, and that's an undercount, and human waste, to include a bucket of human feces. The main municipal insurer for municipalities in this state in a recent newsletter put out a checklist that covers, among other topics, site hazard assessment, outdoor encampments. I want to read in part from that, one of the cautions. 360-degree awareness is necessary. Booby traps, such as tripwires, primitive spring-loaded and other puncture apparatus, buckets of hanging fecal matter, urine, and animal components may be present. Before entering an unknown area, look in all directions, including upward, before entering the new area. Proceed slowly even if the area has been assessed and are cleared by other personnel. The encampments we're talking about here, particularly one like this, that's product of likely weeks of activity by multiple persons, present a non-negligible risk to human health and welfare and to the safety of those who endeavor to clean it up, that the city really has the resources to abate safely. Last, photo up on this screen and others shown during the first read were primarily from the September 11th encampment cleanup, which was citywide, to the fire on October 9th that burned approximately a half acre or so. Since then, we've had a second fire that occurred on or about October 19th. That was about 20 feet by 20 feet of scorched area in Srees Park. It was at a dispersed campsite recessed into the trees off the paved trail. Date to date, that's 39 days of activity, and to present date today, less than two months. The characterization stands of these images and what they depict collectively, it is the wanton destruction of public lands. Referencing this photo for a minute, no one's going back into this area to access this creek, and no one's going down this trail. Persons presented with scenes like this will think the same as someone presented with an occupied tent sit at designated campsite. This area is off limits. This area is occupied by others to our exclusion. We are not welcome to be there. The question to me is, why should that be the message to citizens wanting to access the park this city has created and maintained for them? To be there for the use and enjoyment of all persons? To assert this activity, building structures in the park, setting up campsites in non-designate areas and without permission using the trails as a scrap metal yard, as it is depicted here, dump site, and latrine is without cost to the environment of the public lands or to the collective health, safety, and welfare, and to all the residents' right to enjoyment of public lands. That assertion does violence to the objective facts shared here. It does violence to a lived experience. I have no further comments to offer to council, if there are any questions.
Counsel, comments, questions?
No, thank you.
All right. At the first reading, we held a public hearing, which is what we're required to do under our charter. The second reading requires no public hearing, but we will accept public comment. Can I have a show of hands of those wishing to comment on this? All right. For those of you wishing to comment, you will be limited to three minutes each. In the interest of time, getting everybody up here, I'm going to ask you to please go to the back of the room, get in line, and come forward one at a time as after the person in front of you has completed their comments. I'm also going to ask for those of you who offered public comment at the first reading, if you have nothing new to add to your comments, your comments are a part of the public record. So I would simply ask that you state that you are simply offering your comments that are currently on the record. If you do have anything different to say, we're happy to entertain that. So we will start with the first. Yes, ma'am, come forward, please. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Alida Swallow. I'm a resident of downtown Montrose. I did speak last time, but I have more information this time. Let's talk about how this ordinance plays out. You're homeless in Montrose for one reason or another, and you call family and friends, but no one can come give you a ride to their house. You start looking for short-term housing, and you find out there's a shelter, the lighthouse. It's seasonal. It opened five days ago on November 1st. To get to the lighthouse, you have to show up at Shepherd's Hand downtown at a certain time, and you'll be shuttled there. It's the former Brown Center. It's down by the animal shelter, kind of on the outskirts of town. You're one of the first 30 people to get there, and you get to stay the night. You get a hot meal, and you get a shower, and you have to leave in the morning. It's not a 24-hour shelter. As the council's aware, there are several hundred folks in this community experiencing homelessness. And if you don't get one of the 30 beds, there is nowhere else to go, literally nowhere else to go. So you pitch your tent in a park or on private property. I recently had a woman knock on my door asking for money, and nobody wants that. So if not in our parks, our public spaces, then private spaces, front lawns, backyards? So you don't get a bed at the shelter. You pitch a tent in the park. You pitch a tent near other folks because it's safer and it's warmer, and you're ticketed for camping the first time. People camping generally don't want to be camping. People camping usually People camping usually have limited resources. You get ticketed, get a fine, can't pay the fine. You're ticketed a second time. The second time, they're up to 10 days in jail. When there's the possibility of jail time, you get an attorney. And not a public defender, but a state-appointed, state-funded attorney. And I don't know how that plays out exactly, but I do know that it's expensive. So you move your tent, you move along. You get ticketed a third time for camping in a new spot. That time, there's at least 10 days of jail, probably more. This time, you definitely get a state-funded attorney, again, not a public defender, but somebody who does criminal defense at state expense. You go to jail. Jail doesn't connect you with any resources. Jail's not in the business of doing that, and frankly, there aren't resources to put people in touch with. You serve your jail time, and you get out, and you still don't have a place to live. So you pitch your tent again. You move along to another spot in town, to another encampment, we go get more tickets because there is literally nowhere else in town to go.
20 seconds, ma'am.
This ordinance serves no deterrent purpose. If folks had options, nine of 10 people would not be on the street or in the tent in the park. This is punitive. It's unnecessarily criminalizing something we've already criminalized by city ordinance, and there's nowhere else for folks to go. I urge the council to reject this and at a minimum, table it until folks have options.
Thank you.
30 beds is not enough for several hundred people.
Next, please.
My name is Patrick Crane. I think the council knows me at this point. So to not restate things I've stated at the last couple of meetings, Mr. Magliaro is correct. Myself and a number of my coworkers have come and spoken, not as public defenders and as lawyers who are going to represent anyone charged with this offense in front of the municipal court, but as humans who live in this city who are disgusted by the idea that this is how we are going to spend money to, I guess someone sees this as solving a problem. But I think Ms. Swallow went through and kind of talked about how that's going to play out. It's not solving any problem, and with the amount of money that we are going to put in, whether it is the salary of the officers that was talked about last time, so if it's a few extra officers, we're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars, whether it is all of the costs of putting someone in jail. I ask, I realize no one here can answer, who is paying the cost of the jail time? Because it certainly isn't the person who can't afford to be anywhere but on the street. I'm sure I wasn't the only one who drove here tonight, first drove here, because I have a car, and as I walked out, thought how cold it was, how miserable it was. Do you think anyone is choosing to live and sleep out in a sleeping bag or in a tent in this weather if they don't have to? So presumably, the only reason of a law like this would be deterrence, but how do you deter something when someone does not have another option? And I realize we are talking about two different things as to what would become a criminal law versus how do we provide resources to actually try and help solve a problem, but it's frustrating that that is not being discussed at all, as this was tabled once and we're back for other rounds, that we aren't talking about how about instead of spending whatever it is, half a million dollars are here, we spend a portion of that, help with getting a shelter or an additional one, help with getting food resources. I agree that the site that Mr. Magliaro is talking about is problematic. If we had facility options that were open and put money into that or into trash bins, we could help solve a number of those problems. I want to talk about one other thing from a legal point because Mr. Magliaro talked about home rule and the city's authority. There is a case in front of the Colorado Supreme Court right now, Westminster v. Camp, which is talking about equal protection issues and it being illegal for municipality to have a crime that gives more of a sentence than the state crime. This is an issue for that for two reasons. One, it has a 10-day minimum. That is contrary to state law. And two, it is up to 364 days as opposed to 120.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. The point is, that is an equal protection issue and illegal, and the city is saying it up for more expense with that.
Thank you. I would, we normally don't have any dialogue after comment, but I would suggest, sir, when you said that this issue is not being addressed, I suggest you contact Mr. Chris Ottinger with the city of Montrose seated right over here, and he will fill you in on what is happening now and what we are trying to attempt to organize and study and deal with this issue. So I want to correct your statement and ask you to please contact Ms. Ottinger.
Well, then, I think all of us would appreciate hearing that.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Evan Howard, and I'm going to develop what I said last time. My aim in the comments I offered at the previous general meeting was to suggest that conducts, the conducts written into the ordinance and stated throughout the adoption process would be better addressed by other means than adopting this ordinance. I think we all felt that justice, compassion, and even the empowerment of unhoused persons to take responsibility for sanitation could be fostered better with creative measures aside from the adoption of this ordinance. Nonetheless, the silence of this council following our comments and the council's quick and unanimous vote spoke loud and clear. As I later reflected upon the process, I began to perceive something I had previously unnoticed. The survey cited by City Manager Bell spoke explicitly, explicitly of the condition of our parks. The images displayed in Matt Magliaro's October 15th presentation and today were largely limited to scenes of public parks, though not universally. I reread the aim of the staff report. "The city of Montrose," I quote, "as a property manager, has a governmental interest in the maintenance and preservation of its property. I may still be off in my understanding, but as I see it now, the adoption of this ordinance is less about conducts or persons, but is rather intended to enable the city to effectively manage private property. I can appreciate this aim, even though I may have problems with the means of achieving that aim. Nevertheless, it's the path you've chosen. You must now live with the consequences, just as those who suffer from the consequences must learn to adjust. Nonetheless, although I, along with others, do not agree with this ordinance, we want to make it clear that we stand willing and eager to work alongside the city as best we can to support the appropriate accommodation of the unhoused. It was stated at an earlier work session that the council would closely follow the developments of the newly formed, and you just recently mentioned, unhoused coalition regarding the complex and important matters regarding this issue. I look forward to dreaming and creating within this healthy partnership between public and private sectors for the benefit of all members of the public." Thank you.
Thank you. And for your information, sir, that meeting is being held this Thursday, so please contact Ms. Ottinger for further information. Next, please.
Thank you for allowing me to address you guys this evening. My name is Neil Plitzer, and I live on Lost Creek Road here in Montrose. I've also been hiking the parks off-trail. I always hike off-trail, not on concrete if I can, for probably 12 years, and I've never felt anything but enjoyment. I wanted to mention 25, 30, 25, 16, 20, 23, 25, 28, 34, 23, 22, 28. These are the predicted morning temperatures for the next 10 days. With the only winter shelter near Montrose having capacity of 32, that leaves about 220 people to seek a sleeping spot outdoors. And I know with the increase since the fire, the increased push off of public areas, our church has really been inundated with people needing a place to camp. But I appreciate your dedication and determination to move quickly to protect the cleanliness and safety of our public spaces and certain users of those spaces. I do, however, earnestly plead with you to work just as quickly with the citizens of Montrose to help the unhoused. Our goal should be to provide food, safe housing, recovery, and health services as well as vocational skills so they can move on to a purposeful and meaningful life apart from incarceration. As a citizen of Montrose, I stand ready to participate and help in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Frank Jankowski. I am a local homeowner and business owner. I've lived the vast majority of my life in the Montrose area. I'm an avid outdoorsman and probably built half the unauthorized BMX tracks in Cerise Park when it was abandoned by the city back in the early 2000s. My understandings of the penalties on this is that the first offense is $100 fine, second and subsequent offenses can be up to 10 days of jail. According to Commander McNulty of the Montrose County Sheriff Department, it costs an average of $92 a day to house somebody in the county jail, right? 10-day stint is 920 bucks. So you pick up two offenses in one month, that's $1,840. The Pew Research Center says that the average rent for a studio apartment in Montrose, Colorado is 1,100 bucks. So you're wasting $740 a month to incarcerate these people, and you're still only housing them for 20 days. Not only is that morally bankrupt, because, again, these are not diseased animals, these are people's sons and daughters, mothers and fathers. It is also fiscally irresponsible and a terrible use of taxpayer money and county resources. Yeah, I would, I would encourage the council and our entire town to remember that you can judge one's moral character and the content of their soul by how they treat the most vulnerable members of society, and that would definitely include the homeless. Please keep that in consideration. Thank you for your time. That is all.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Jennifer Jones. Montrose Ordinance 2670 differs from the municipal ordinance structure in the city of Grants Pass decision, especially when accounting for the entirety of the Grants Pass ordinance. It has cited multiple times in the Grants Pass majority opinion that initial violations can or may trigger a fine with multiple violations which can result in imprisonment. As well, the violation only applies to the particular city park in which the offending conduct occurred, instead of constituting a violation in and of itself that is applicable to all city parks, as it is with Ordinance 2670. The majority opinion emphasizes the nature of enforcement in Grants Pass, as the city's officers are encouraged to render aid and support to the homeless whenever possible. This is in contrast to the rigidity of the three-offense penalty structure of Ordinance 2670, and mandatory jail sentencing and no such language in Ordinance 2670 compel city officers to render aid as part of the enforcement process. The Grants Pass majority opinion also reiterates that many substantive legal protections and provisions of the Constitution have important roles to play when states and cities seek to enforce their laws against the homeless. The opinion goes on to cite the necessity defense to certain criminal charges that extend to charges for illegal camping when it comes to those with nowhere else to go. Constitutional considerations such as due process within our Fourth and Fifteenth Amendments are implicitly mitigated with the severity of Ordinance 2670, especially it relates to increased mortality rates associated with abatement practices. We have yet to find an ordinance as severe as that of Ordinance 2670, especially upon its comparison to Colorado revised statutes and 33 other Colorado municipalities. All municipalities reviewed have an open, non-graduated penalty typical of other civil infractions. 11 Colorado municipalities regulate camping according to time, place, and manner, and Grants Pass municipal code currently regulates the same way. The maximum penalty is $50 with jail prohibited. Eight Colorado municipalities held at no citation may be issued if there was no emergency shelter or publicly designated place for a person to go. Colorado revised statutes in seven Colorado municipalities have a fine-only penalty and jail is prohibited. Ordinance 2670 appears to utilize the most severe aspects found from other ordinance regulations.
30 seconds, ma'am.
Cobbled together to create the current proposal. No one utilizes mandatory jail, and I implore the abolishment of this ordinance. The city of Montrose has been regularly collecting survey data from its constituency, and as early as 2017, homelessness has been flagged as a concern. We are seven years in since the initial reporting of this thematic concern, and the city of Montrose is still working with more or less the same resource services. Why is this, and we are ready to assist. Thank you.
Good evening again, John Brown, Montrose. I've had the privilege over the last 10 years that, to be on the Board of Directors for Shepherd's Hand and the Lighthouse. They provide assistance to the homeless. They're right, there's only 36 beds there on any winter night from November 1st to April 30th. During the rest of the year, they're on their own. Anybody that is homeless needs to find someplace else. True, they have to go to Shepherd's Hand to get on the bus to be requalified to find out if they do not have any certain legal problems that would preclude them from entering the Lighthouse. The problem that we're, that I'm seeing, we are doing a lot to prevent our homeless from doing things. But the one thing that we're not doing is providing something for them. Shepherd's Hand provides food, provides showers, provides laundry. They have food distribution. We have food distribution for people who are in need that are not necessarily even homeless. And we have, they have connections to other agencies in town, such as Hilltop or Region 10, that can help them to try to help them get permanent housing. There are some, granted, that don't want permanent housing. They don't want to live under a roof. They would rather live out in the cold than to live under somebody else's rule. But those are not the majority of the people. Those are the small numbers. When Shepherd's Hand was first coming into, in town, moving from just being a food distribution to something more, the trouble that they experienced in trying to find permanent quarters was a lot of people saying, "Not on my street, not near my house, not in my neighborhood." Where then? I think it's up to the city and the county to provide some sort of place where we can have our homeless go-to receive any help that they need. Granted, there's going to have to be rules, and they're going to have to listen to those rules, but there's, needs to be someplace for people to be able to go to get this help.
30 seconds, sir.
And, you know, I, I just, it just, I, I can understand, I would not want somebody camping in my front door, my front yard or my backyard without my permission, obviously, but I know what's happening around town, and people need that. We need control, but we also need to provide an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this issue? Okay, if there's no further public comment, we'll come back to council for any further discussion amongst council. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I probably shouldn't say anything, but I, I've noticed then that there's a lot of display of compassion for the unhoused when it comes to this issue. But I have yet anybody, including the council, to, to say anything about, what about the two young ladies that I met and the parents that they're afraid to go into their backyard because of the situation that was happening in the city parking lot that, that had people camping back there, drinking, raising hell, making noise for, for several days? And at this point, the young girls are afraid to even go to the backyard and play in their own house, okay? And then somebody got up there and said something about, they believe that the homeless or, or unhoused were the most vulnerable. You know, I want to disagree with that. Me personally, I think it's the, the Me personally, I think it's the senior citizens that sit in these homes that don't have anybody to visit them or anything else. And one more thing before I finish is that tomorrow, from 10:00 to 11:30, in the Police Community Room, is a quarterly roundtable on unhousing the people. And that from Christopher Otter, is that you?
That's Thursday, not tomorrow.
Thursday, Mr. Yuluberry.
It says November 7th.
Today's the 5th.
Thursday, okay.
Well, but, so, there's an opportunity for people to go over there and get involved and put in your comments and then maybe address it somehow. That's all I can say.
I would like to make a comment. About a few weeks ago, six, seven weeks ago, the City of Pueblo did a cleanup in their community also. They had 35 beds available that were offered to the people. Not one person took one of those beds. They did not want to be housed.
Mr. Merrick, I had a few comments, just for context. Normally, we wouldn't respond, but I think it'll help add a little context to what the city's role is and what we've been working on for years, for those in the audience. I've never received any calls or communication with anyone from the community regarding what the city's doing on any of these issues, just for the record, and I'm at City Hall. So now I think we can get it on the record. It can be at the meeting here, and then it'll be on the website for anybody to check it out. But as a reminder, it feels like 10 years ago now, I've been here just over 13 years, we set up a homeless coalition. We invited 500 to 600 people to the Pavilion Auditorium. We packed the house. We brought representatives from state agencies, all the local agencies, Hilltop at the time, Center for Mental Health, Lighthouse, Jim Renfro, probably John Brown was there, and a lot of others that were involved in the homeless coalition, as well as Buddy Cook and a few other representatives from various churches. And as was mentioned, this has been an issue facing our community for a very long time, the homeless issue. But that isn't the issue we're talking about tonight. This is a camping ban ordinance, and as I reminded everyone last time, but it seems to be forgotten in between meetings, it has been illegal to camp in our parks for decades. So this is not a new rule. The only thing new about it is the enforcement teeth added on the third offense for mandatory jail time, and that has nothing to do with whether somebody is homeless or not. And we can argue the semantics, but what we're addressing has to do with the photos we've seen, has to do with the fear in our park system, has to do with people tearing up our stuff. Whether you're homeless or you're not homeless, you don't have the right to tear up other people's property. That is what we're dealing with. We can deal with the homeless and the unhoused situation differently, which we are. We're rekindling. Chris Ottinger is working with us out of our Planning and Community Development Department on community engagement. We have reestablished that homeless coalition. It's called the Roundtable. That's what's being referred to at 10:00 AM on Thursday. I'll be out of town for a doctor's appointment, otherwise I would be there. But we'll have several city staff members there. We're leading that group, and we've invited, and one of the gentlemen here that spoke was at the last one and will be attending, I believe. We do encourage representatives of the various churches. A decade ago, when we pushed this issue, we had a wraparound approach idea. We can't just build a shelter for people. We have to also provide wraparound services that are related to mental health, social workers, counseling, drug rehabilitation, alcohol rehabilitation, and workforce development. And we looked at an area near the Sharing Ministries Food Pantry at that time. Whether that's viable anymore, I don't know, because there's been a lot of development in that particular corridor. But we are dedicated as a city to find an appropriate place, but we can't just shelter people. That isn't the issue. We have to deal with the issues that are leading to being unhoused to begin with, which is mental health issues, drug and alcohol dependency issues most of the time, as well as people who have been released from being incarcerated, and they have nowhere else to go. We have a varying population of people who are unhoused in our community. We have people who do choose to be unhoused, and we all know in this room, we deal with those people. Some of you have dealt with those people. So we need to understand that they will not go into a shelter whether we build one or not. That is the minority, though. There are situational homeless. There are people that are just down on their luck at the current time. There are current places like Haven House and Dolphin House and some other entities that work with people that are needing, they're immediately in crisis. They need acute care. They need places to escape vulnerable situations. But we're not talking about that group of people for the most part. I met with Jim Renfro recently. He says there's about 150 people that he's aware of. We've talked with the representatives at Shepherd's Hand. Our deputy manager just visited the site here in the last couple of weeks, and they're doing a great job there, and they're keeping track of how many people are coming in and what kind of services they need. So we're hopeful that over the next few months, this roundtable will gather all that data from the varying entities that are working on this issue, and then we'll be able to come up with, not a solution, because honestly, we've talked and researched with other communities, there's no true solution to this, but there are remedies that you can incrementally address situations as they come along. So it's really hard to come up with a wraparound thing that's going to solve everyone's problems, because every unhoused person is different and their needs are different. But for the record, the city is working on it. So any comments that say otherwise just aren't genuine. And unfortunately, sometimes we get tied up with our emotional response to things, and we say things that aren't true out of anger or frustration. But we have tried as a city staff and as a group of elected officials here, I've had communication with each elected official at the city council, and we're all committed to addressing this situation. But it's really important that we divide these two issues. We keep wanting to make tonight's camping ban ordinance about the homeless and about the unhoused. It is not. It is about protecting our public assets that are owned by our taxpayers, and all 21,000 residents of the City of Montrose have equal opportunity to access our parks and our trails and our open spaces in a free manner, and we owe it to everyone. So sometimes there's a minority, vocal minority, but we have to look out for the greater good, which is 21,000 people. We are working on that. So I just want that out there. This decision tonight has absolutely nothing to do with the unhoused or the homeless. And if anybody wants to call me, my cell phone number's all over the place, call and talk to me, we'll connect you with our resources at the city, and we'd love to have you come in. One thing we cannot do, which we addressed at a past meeting, is we cannot allow volunteers to help us clean up these camps. It's very dangerous. We just presented at Centennial Middle School last week. We heard from the seventh graders, one girl in one of the class's mom did that as a volunteer and was poked by a needle, and she had six months of treatments to make sure that she didn't get really sick. So there's a liability issue there. We just cannot turn volunteers loose to go and help clean up the encampments. It has to be paid professional staff who are covered under our insurance, and that's for legal and liability reasons, but no other reason other than that.
Thank you, Bill. I just would echo everything you just said. I might also make one additional comment, public comment myself. For those of you who believe that this council is cold, harsh, morally bankrupt, immoral, that is absolutely not true. These are some of the finest people I've ever met in my life, and they are committed to running your community and protecting the health, safety, and welfare of all of our citizens. So to suggest otherwise is incorrect. And as Bill has explained, we don't do everything out in the public. We have to get our ducks in a row, so to speak. We have to put our energies where they are most beneficial to try and work on these issues that we know exist. We're not sweeping them under the rug. We know they're there. We are cognizant of it. We are just as worried about the issues as you folks are. But give us an opportunity to deal with these issues separately and apart, as Bill said. They are different. So with that, if there are no further comments from the council, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2670 on second reading as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote. My computer won't help. Down here? Up here? Yeah. Okay. All right, it is unanimous vote. The ordinance passes on second reading. Thank you all for coming this evening to offer your comments. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is city council consideration of Ordinance 2674 on first reading on the ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing and appropriating funds for defraying the expenses and liabilities of the City of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year, fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025. And for presentation of this agenda item, we'll turn to our Finance Director, Ms. Shane Whittemore.
Good evening, city council. Just one second, let me get...
Blowing the mic.
There we go. All right, I have a slideshow that you all have pretty much seen before, but for the public, I will go through this and highlight some of the 2020, 2025 budget items. This is first reading of the ordinance 2674. I just want to reiterate again how blessed and thankful I am to have such a great team to work with. All of the city employees have had some input into this budget, and especially the city council, the city manager's office, and all the department heads have worked really hard. We started in January of this year, looking at different aspects of our budget and working through as a group what it was and how it should go, what our priorities were for 2025. On May 13th, we did meet with the city council. We call that our big picture meeting, where we talk through priorities and how we could, as a staff, establish a budget that would meet those priorities. We then did a 40-plus hour meeting, like we do every year, with all the department heads and the city manager's office, talking through each and every line item of the budget. We ended in September with a proposed budget and a day-long meeting with city council and the department heads to discuss once again what was in the budget and make sure we didn't have any questions or concerns or changes to the budget. So with that being said, the city charter does dictate how we approve an annual budget, and that requires a public hearing before November 15th. So this serves as that public hearing, as well as we had an open house on October 17th, and it will be published on the website as soon as I can figure out how to do it with ADA compliance. That being said, the budget is required to be passed by November 30th. So this is first reading of the budget for city council and the public. Let's see if my computer works. There we go. This is a little bit hard to read, but basically, we are proposing 111.7 million dollar budget. Of that, 26.3 million is in transfers. So transfers between the general fund and mainly capital improvements and public safety is that 26.3 million, leaving 85.4 million to be spent throughout the city, the general fund, enterprise funds, internal service funds, special revenue funds. We do a lot of different things that some municipalities don't do, such as baseball, competitive youth baseball. We have a tourism center, a guest services center. So this slide basically represents how, and comparative to, years past. As I was saying, that 111.7 million is distributed amongst many funds, the biggest of which is the general fund at 38.6 million. That's the fund that supports streets, parks, building, planning, finance, city manager's office. The next one is public safety at 17 and a half million. So that's your patrol, your admin, code enforcement, the academy, and animal services. The Office of Business and Tourism, this is where our guest services is located. We do marketing out of here as well. And DART is part of that 1.7 million dollars. Special revenue funds total almost $350,000. Those range from our Greater City Montrose Loan Fund. Capital projects at 13.9 million. So this is the amount we're going to transfer to capital projects, basically. Our enterprise funds consist with $22.7 million. Those are your water funds, your sewer funds, trash and recycle funds. Our internal service funds, we have four of them, the facilities fund, the fleet fund, information services fund, and then our employee benefit fund, which is our self-insurance for our employees. And then to round that off, debt service, agency, and permanent funds is $4.3 million. That number includes the transfer we send to Montrose Recreation District for the 0.3% sales tax we collect. Just to go over a few of the capital expenditures, those are probably our most popular line items. Not sure why that, oh, there we go. The childcare facility renovation, we have that in the budget at $600,000. That's an initiative we took on in 2025 to help with our childcare issue in Montrose. So that'll just be the tip of the iceberg, I think. Pavilion stage and auditorium lighting upgrades at $200,000. That's been in the works for several years. And as I understand it, some of our lighting, since that facility has aged quite a bit, we cannot get any longer, plus this will be more energy efficient. And then banner poles. I believe these go on Townsend Avenue instead of Main Street. We just installed some banner poles on Main Street after they fell, I believe, last year. Okay, so then parks. Part of our parks expenditures, hockey rink at 100,000. North Roundabout Landscaping, 75,000. Rotary Park Irrigation System Replacement at 500,000. That's for the first year. Trail connectivities, and then the Marotta Site Improvement at 65,000. Sunset Mesa Flagpole at 15,000. Some of our other park projects are the Cedar Creek Cemetery Bridge Replacement. We started that in 2024. We'll finish it in 2025 at about 150,000. Denver Park Improvements for 200,000. Lyons Park Clubhouse Sewer Line Repair at 75,000. And then basically, the public safety fund has one capital, we classify as capital, and that would be to finish the interior of the Command Center in Cerise Park. Capital infrastructure, so these are your streets and your sidewalks. Movemo.co, that's an initiative we've been promoting and dedicated to since 2017. 5.25 million will go towards those improvements. Three and a half million for the Woodgate East Oak Grove Roundabout. That was the project that was pushed in '24 so that we could do the culvert on Ogden Road. West Main Revitalization and East Main Revitalization are both in the budget for next year, so hopefully we can get those projects done, along with water and sewer improvements in both the west and east main portions. We're going to start the north park design for reconstruction of that arterial at 100,000. Ogden Road Bridge, that's year two. That's the project we substituted this year to fund. So that'll be a half million dollars. Sunset Mesa Road Drainage and Grading for $200,000. And then our sidewalk and ADA improvements, we usually have a bucket for them for $100,000. And we've done a really good job in the last few years of spending most of that money. So it's been a great partnership with the community. In the water fund, we have basically $10 million budgeted. The large capital projects in the water fund will include those East Main, East Main Towns into San Juan, sorry, I couldn't get that straight in my head, at a million and a half. So that'll be the huge, that'll be the biggest part, I think, of the project. I know Jim's not here, Scott's here, he can tell me if I'm wrong. But as far as getting the east main portion of the road done, it's going to be the water and sewer project. 6600 Road Waterline Extension Interconnect Project, we're calling that. It's got, it's a partnership with Tri-County Water. That's almost a million dollars. Then the Woodgate East Oak Grove Roundabout Waterline, these are estimates. We are assuming we're going to spend about $225,000 on the infrastructure under the roundabout. And then the Ogden Road Lotzenheiser Bridge at $100,000. Here's another graph that you probably can't see all that well, but the solid lines that run horizontal on there, the top one is our fund balances, or what our reserves are. And then the dotted line that's red is our, what our reserve policy, what we want to keep in reserves to have a healthy fund. So that's with inflation. You can see how those numbers are going up year after year. This is a 2023 to 2029 graph. And that brings us into our increases for 2025 in water. Our connection fees will go at 5%. So all of the fees in water will increase by 5%. The water usage will increase 5% plus 50 cents per 1,000 gallons, and that's a pass-through amount from Project 7. We've been dealing with that for the last couple of years. That will continue in 2025. And then, just for reference, a residential customer will see a monthly increase of $1.05 to their base and 72 cents per 1,000 gallons of water used. The sewer fund, we're just about $8 million, proposed expenditures. Large capital projects there are, we always put some money in the budget for those sewer lines that might fail, that probably will fail. We do not have a project identified for that, but $300,000 is the estimated amount. And I think over the last few years, same situation, that's been enough to cover that emergency. We've got a reimbursement for some sewer work. The Woodgate East Oak Grove Roundabout Sewer is in this budget as well, estimated. And then the design for the Northeast Trunk Line, which is in the CIP, call it CIP 3, that's the project that we're going to start designing and try to get some headway on, so that we can increase the flow from, I believe it's from the east to the north. Oh, went too fast. The wastewater treatment plant, this is a fun one. Dave's not here to expand upon it, but we are gearing up for a lot of the regulatory changes from the federal and state governments that are coming down, that we have to comply with. And so in 2025, we budgeted $3 million to engineer and design what those improvements are going to be at the wastewater treatment plant. Sewer rate increase in 2025 is due to a lot of our inflationary, as well as the federal mandates. Proposed inflationary increase of 5% to monthly fees and connections. Residents will see $1.29 per month in that fee increase. As I was talking, the wastewater treatment plant is 40 years old, so it is going to need some major repairs, and we're anticipating those in 2026, 2027. So this graph basically shows, if we did nothing, we'd go bankrupt by 2029. We're going to propose to issue $30 million in 2026 to fund those improvements. And then you see how the solid line there, it's a little skewed because of that borrowing, but we really, it really goes up there in 2027, but then comes back down to pretty normal in 2029, after those improvements are made. Trash and recycling, about $3.2 million is proposed in those expenditures to continue the services that we provide. In 2025, it's the second year of a 20% increase. Residential 1 gallon, 90 gallon container, one pickup per week is going to be $26.35, which is $4.39 more than it was in 2024. Commercial and multifamily 300 gallon containers goes up to 4 cents per gallon, which is a cent increase per gallon. And you can see from this graph, that solid line, we're finally in 2020, between 2027, 2028, we cross where our target reserve is supposed to be. And then in 2029, we're looking pretty good. It kind of depends on growth, it depends on inflation as far as what we might need to continue the service as it is. One small caveat, that our trash and recycle fee is right in about the middle, if you were to take a survey of Colorado communities our size. So it's really not out of line for what we provide. With that, I have questions, but I don't know if anybody's here to, has any questions. City Council, do you have any questions or comments?
I just would like to say, thank you, Shaney, Bill, and the entire staff, department heads, for working to put this budget together this year. I think you guys have done an amazing job. And in all of the budget discussions that you've had with council, you have presented, at least for me, a non-financial person, the ability to understand what it is we're doing or attempting to do. So I think you just absolutely need to be congratulated for a job well done of putting this together.
One comment I would like to add is that, for any member of the public that has questions, that Shaney and Bill love talking budgets, they love talking finance, and you're always welcome to approach anybody in the city, and we will point you in the right direction, we'll get you to get the answers you'd like. Totally transparent, we look forward to actually explaining what we do and why we do it.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question. Is a TT person?
Is Greg still here? My computer just did a.
Hit touch buttons.
Yeah, and it's a brand-new computer for me. It's recently been a yellow patch. It won't get past that. Oops. Well, while they're working on that, I will conduct a hearing, this is the first reading. So I'll open the hearing on the first reading of the budget for 2025 and ask if there are any public comments. Seeing no one rushing to the, forward to the podium, I will close the hearing, bring it back to council, and entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to pass ordinance 2674 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Been a motion and a second, please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you all again. Moving right along to item 11, City Council Consideration of Resolution 2024-19, repealing and replacing chapters 3-1-1, 3-1-2, and 3-1-3 of the City of Montrose Regulations Manual in adopting the 2025 fee schedule. And for that, I will turn to our city clerk, Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor Reed and City Council. It is our practice to bring the proposed fee schedule for the upcoming year to the City Council at the same time the budget ordinance is heard on first reading. So I'd like to quickly review the list of proposed changes that were also included in the meeting packet. We have had one change since we discussed the fee schedule revisions at the October 14th work session, and that is that we removed the dog bearings application fee under animal control fees, because the limit on cats and dogs was removed from the municipal code. And we did discuss that at the work session. Then, under land use fees, there were land dedication fees in lieu for parks and schools that were added to the fee schedule. But I'd like to point out that these are not new fees. They were moved to the fee schedule from the land use code. So they are not new, and they are not increased. Then, under parks and private use of public property, we'd like to change the wording under events use permits to clarify, excuse me, that the fee is per event day. And we would also like to change the rental fee for the Lyons Community Building to $40 for five hours, and eliminate the separate fee for kitchen use. So everyone who uses the building will have access to the kitchen and will be free to use it as they would like. Then, under municipal court fees, we are increasing the court costs to $50, and we are eliminating the useful public service fee. Under the pavilion fee schedule, the fee for a portable bar with a bartender, we're proposing to increase that to $20 per hour. And we'd like to increase the fee for additional hours of scheduled event time to $100 per hour. And then, under fee schedule for water, sewer, and trash, as Shaney pointed out during her budget presentation, the water and sewer connection fees will increase by 5%. Water usage fees will increase by 5% per 1,000 gallons, plus the Project 7 pass-through. The sewer connection and non-residential usage fees were increased by 5%. And the trash and recycling fees will increase by 20%. The red-line version of these fee schedule changes is included in the meeting packet. And then the final version of the fee schedule is included as Exhibit A to the resolution. And if you have any questions, we do have representatives of everyone who proposed fee schedule changes here tonight to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments, council? I do have one comment. And this has to do with the entry under land use fees of the land dedication fee in lieu, parks fee and land dedication fee in lieu, school fee, that has been introduced into the fee schedule for the first time this year. But I want to correct a rather gross misstatement of fact that was contained in the local media a few weeks ago when this was first brought to council with the updated changes to the fee schedule in a work session. And it was stated in the local media by one of the authors that this is a, the cost of housing in Montrose is going up because we are now imposing this new fee in lieu for parks and schools. That's absolutely not true. It is incorrect. It is, this, these fees have been in effect since at least 2000, at least 24 years ago. So this is not new, and this is not increasing the cost of housing in Montrose, as was stated. And I think it needs to be clear on the record that this is being moved from the code into the land use table, fees table, because we review fees on an annual basis, and we make changes in fees on an annual basis. And we can do that by resolution, as opposed to amending codes, which requires the amendments, amendments to an ordinance, to readings, et cetera. A much more complicated process when we are setting the fee schedules. So that's the primary reason for the move into the fee schedule itself, as opposed to being in the code. So I just wanted to make that clear for the record, so that everyone knew that. That being said, any further comments? If not, I would entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to accept public comment. There being no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-19 as presented.
I'll second that.
Been a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. All right, moving along to agenda item number 12, City Council Consideration of Additional Funding from Region 10 Meals Programs. And for that, we'll call on Deputy City Manager Anne Morgan Thaler.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor Reed and City Council. For those listening online, I am Anne Morgan Thaler, the Deputy City Manager. I'm also joined today by Michelle Haines, the Director of Region 10. She's in the audience, thank you, Michelle, for being here tonight and waiting through the meeting. Just in case you have additional questions, or, Michelle, in case I forget to cover something important that you'd like to add. At the October 1st regular City Council work session, Brian Bowler from Region 10's Area Agency on Aging presented some information to City Council regarding some funding cuts to the Delivered Meals Program and the associated service cuts that resulted from that. And council asked for staff to work with Region 10 and receive some additional information about those funding cuts and how council might be able to possibly provide some assistance in that area. I did meet with Brian and Michelle and learned more about the funding cuts and what council might be able to do. And there's some information in the packet, but I'd love to just recount it here for you as well. So Region 10 is on a fiscal year that started in July of 2024 and goes through June of 2025. So different than City Council where we're wrapping up our budget year, Region 10 is really in the middle of their budget year. And this year, unfortunately, there were some state cuts to the funding for the Delivered Meals Program. We usually think of those as Meals on Wheels, though Brian described as well, there's something called Mom's Meals, which are those sort of extra nutritious meals that can be delivered to people who really need them, as well as then the Meals on Wheels Program. And previously, through Region 10, the Area Agency on Aging was providing the Meals on Wheels to clients five days a week. Now, with these funding cuts, Region 10 had to cut the meals back to three days a week. The funding cuts that Region 10 actually put into their, so, there were funding cuts, and in order to provide even just three meals a week, Region 10 budgeted a deficit of $120,000 in their budget for this year. So they're operating at a deficit, even to provide those three meals a week. So that's something that I didn't really understand before, and I wanted to make sure was clear. This is really unusual for Region 10 to budget a deficit, but they knew that providing at least three meals a week through the Meals on Wheels Program was so important that they budgeted this deficit and committed to trying to make up the difference during the year through grants, as well as coming to member agencies to see if there might be anything else a member agency could do to help fund and close that gap. So that is why we're here today, talking about this. The proposal that I'd like to present to you is that City Council could assist with aiding Region 10 in filling this funding gap of $120,000. It's not really possible to determine how many meals are being used in the city of Montrose. It fluctuates depending on the need. But the city of Montrose comprises about 15% of Region 10's service population. So if we think of providing then 15% of that deficit, or that gap of $120,000, it would equal $18,000 that the city could contribute in order to assist Region 10. This would be a 100%. This would be a one-time contribution, so we're not committing to doing it for any future years. And it would come out of the 2024 budget if you elect to do so. Finance staff is working right now to determine if we'll need a supplemental budget to bring to you soon, later in the year. This wouldn't put us over the edge and require us to need an otherwise, you know, otherwise need a supplemental budget. So this isn't gonna be the thing that makes us need a supplemental budget, but I can't tell you that you won't need a supplemental budget at the end of the year. So I've worked with finance staff. Shaney, let me present this item to you and recommend $18,000. Let's see, I did note in the memo as well, one other thing to note is that the City of Montrose does pay dues to Region 10. For the 2025 calendar year, we'll be paying $23,977. That does include a contribution of about $85,000 to the Area Agency on Aging. And it's not anticipated that that will go down. It's a little more, it's about $4,000 more than we paid in 2024. But it's, it's likely that we'll continue contributing about $23,000 in dues to Region 10, if not more, as, as the need increases. So I think in summary, your contribution of any amount, whether it's $18,000 or $1, would not serve more meals in Montrose to the Meals on Wheels clients. But it would continue to serve these three meals, which are essential to clients. And it would ensure that Region 10 is able to continue providing meals to the neediest folks in our community when that need arises.
Great. Mayor Pro Tim Frank, I know you're a representative on the Board of Region 10.
So I, I'm the Vice Chairman of Region 10. And I just wanted to point out that Region 10 is such an amazing partner, not only for the City of Montrose, but for everyone in the region. They provide small business loans, they provide business education counseling, they provide so many services in addition to our Area Agency on Aging. So this is one of those where we're not just helping a small little program, but we're aiding a partner that is giving much, much value to the City of Montrose, Montrose County, as well as our surrounding region. This last year, when the legislature did the long bill, which is where they're allocating funding for a lot of our programs in our state-funded areas, they basically stripped so much money out of our Area Agency on Aging that it made it nearly impossible for us to actually fulfill the function that is so direly needed in Montrose, in Delta, in Uray, all over the Western Slope. And that if we have an opportunity to help, to help backfill some of that, just to, if not, we can't help really advance it more, like you say, but if we can help us sustain that program at the level that it currently is, we're providing a nutritious meal for seniors who might not get any meals other than this. So I am really excited and proud that we're actually considering this to help out. So thank you for council, for kind of coming alongside, appreciate that.
It's not just the meals that they're providing, it's also from time to time, the delivery people that deliver these meals visit with some of these persons that are receiving these meals and, and converse with them. And sometimes they're the only contact that they have other than family, if they have family that come and visit them. From experience, I've been to these deliveries and, and I can tell you, when somebody opens the door and say, "Oh, I'm so glad to see you, how are you doing?", it just kind of makes you want to go over there and give them a nice hug and, and actually return the hug that they give you.
I note that we have the Director of Region 10 in the audience tonight. Do you have anything you'd like to offer?
Sure. Thank you, Anne and Dave, for bringing this to the council and thank you, council, for considering it. I just really wanted to say thank you, we appreciate your consideration, we appreciate the city's ongoing support of Region 10, both our annual dues, the support for small businesses, and, and your consideration of this additional request. Be happy to answer any questions, but other than that, just wanted to express our gratitude for you all stepping up and thinking about going above and beyond.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'm proud.
I guess I should ask if there's any public comment. I know there's none, but.
I'd like to make the motion to approve $18,000 in funding for Region 10 Area Agency on Aging Delivered Meals Program.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
I just wish it was more.
And that passes unanimously, thank you. We're going to move on to Item 14. And for Item 14 and 15, oh, I'm sorry, I've over, jumped ahead. Item 13, is my voice making me sick? City, sorry about that, Chris. City Council, Consideration of Resolution 2024-21, authorizing the filing of a United States Environmental Protection Agency Brown Field Cleanup Grant Application in the amount of $2 million. And for that, we have Community Development Specialist Christopher Ottinger. And I didn't really forget your item.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Good evening, council, mayor, and members of the public. The item before you today is a resolution authorizing the pursuit of a grant for the United States Development Environmental Protection Agency. The agency each year allocates funding for programs related to the characterization and remediation of former, former commercial and industrial sites around the U.S. that contain or are perceived to contain environmental contamination. This is what's known as a brown field, though through a competitive grant process, entities who control these sites can receive financial assistance. The Community Development Department is seeking approval to compete for these dollars to remediate the former Bullock Electric Steam Plant located at 30 West South Fourth Street. The plant is a former coal-fired plant, power plant originally constructed in 1950, but has since sat idle since about the 80s. It's had many owners throughout its history, but ultimately in 2021, the city, in cooperation with the MEA, purchased the property. It was then split. The city now owns and controls the original power generation structure, former cooling pond in the southern portion of the property. DMEA had the northern portion directly adjacent to their current substation. Prior to its ownership, the city was able to conduct EPA-funded environmental site assessments in 2014, 2017, identifying many of the site hazards and potential impacts. And upon its ownership, the city was actually able to secure the property from natural and human intrusion and to prevent any further spread of hazardous material. In 2024, the city was awarded a service grant to complete the site characterization that we need to pursue this grant in order to better understand the structure that's still standing, whether it's worthy of demolition or, or remediation and reuse. Thankfully, that was the case, that we are, we should be able to reuse the plant. The, so following, following that, the, the estimates that came out, right now, very rough estimates, but about $2.3 million to remediate the site, the majority of which would contain asbestos, both inside and actually outside the building. There was some spillage over the course of its history, as well as there's the fly ash that was deposited there over the course of time. For a large portion of its history was deposited onsite and eventually moved off-site to a site east of town. If funded, the grant would provide for the costs associated with hiring of qualified contractors, environmental professionals, and then along with city staff and CDPHE, the state agency, and EPA, we can finalize a remediation plan and go through the work of remediation. As far as schedule is concerned, if awarded, the planning would start in the summer of this next year. Following, following that, would the remediation work could then begin? The, as was said, the total amount that we are requesting from the EPA is about $2 million. So that, and there's no required match for this current round, thanks to the bipartisan infrastructure law. Typically, there's about a 20% cost share that's required. At this point, there is none. However, in order to help leverage the scoring for this very competitive grant, we are asking the council to consider paying for any expenses that may exceed this $2 million. With that in mind, two considerations to that as well is in order, we've already discussed this situation with CDPHE, and they're already willing to talk about the eligibility which we already have, are eligible for grant funding through their, their state grant funds, which are separate from EPA, though they get it from EPA directly, as well as any other options as well. Also, another consideration is also the, the budget impact, should there be an overage or need a consideration of, of further funding from the city side? This would not impact 2025 budget, but 2026, rather. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Council, comments, questions? Hearing none, do we have any public comment? Seeing or hearing no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-21 as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Now, at this time, we will move on to Item Number 14. And for Item Number 14, I need to recuse myself because of a potential conflict. And so I'm going to pass the gavel over to Mayor Pro Tim Frank to conduct Item 14 and 15. Please call me back.
Thank you. We'll, we'll wait a few moments. Let Mayor Reed get out of the building. So Item 14 and 15 are linked and that we will consider, basically the presentation's going to cover all of those items at the same time. So even though the presentation is only one presentation, it will cover what is effectively three items. So Item Number 14 is the Leonard Farm Addition Annexation. A hearing will be held on the annexation of the Leonard Farm Addition. Resolution 2024-20, City Council, Consideration of Resolution 2024-20, findings of fact for the Leonard Farm Addition Annexation. And we'll turn this over to Planner 2, William Reese.
All right, thank you, and good evening, City Council and members of the public. We have discussed this a few times during City Council work session on September 3rd, and the resolution setting the hearing date was approved on September 17th, and today was that date set. This is regarding a 71.22 acre property within the city's urban growth boundary and the city's sewer and water service areas. The area is urbanizing and more than one-sixth of the perimeter borders existing city limits. The property is part of an enclave and this annexation would not entirely eliminate the enclave, but it would reduce the size. This is located south of Ogden Road. Surrounding area is zoned R1, very low-density district in the south, R2, low-density district in the southeast, R3, medium-density district on the west, R3A, medium-high-density district on both the east and west, and some B4 neighborhood shopping district in the northeast. There are also some properties located outside of city, city limits directly to the north. The applicant has requested the R3A medium-high-density district zoning designation with this application. We did bring that forward to the Planning Commission on September 25th, and they unanimously recommended approval of R3A. Here is the annexation plan itself, and as shown, the property does meet the contiguity requirement per state law. Also, since this is larger than 10 acres in size, we did submit an annexation impact report to the county. According to the future land use map within our comprehensive plan, this area is shown mostly as residential mixed density medium, which would suggest that the area is appropriate for a variety of residential types mixed within the neighborhood, including single-family, townhomes, duplexes, or triplexes. And then there is also a small portion in the north of the property that's shown as residential mixed density low, which would suggest primarily single-family homes, but also potentially small amounts of attached residential development. According to the growth area map, this is shown as Growth Area 2, which indicates the property has some level of or moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. And so in summary, the area is urbanizing and the property does meet the state's contiguity requirements. As I said, the annexation impact report has already been submitted to the county. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, city and state annexation policy, and the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2024-20, Ordinance 2675, and Ordinance 2676. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Reese? And the applicant is here. If you do like to, if you would like to make a comment, you're not required to. And if you would give your name for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, Matt Miles, 1282 West Oak Grove Road. I agree with everything William said. I'm just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Miles? Nope, thank you. So having said, we will entertain a motion. Oh, any other public comment? Would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-20?
We'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-20 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes with one abstention. Moving on to Ordinance 2675 on first reading. City Council, Consideration of Ordinance 2675 on first reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado for the annexation of the Leonard Farm Addition. And for this, we will hold a hearing, and I'll open the hearing. Are there any public comments on the issue? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2675 on first reading as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And once again, that passes with one abstention. And moving on to Ordinance 2676. City Council, Consideration of Ordinance 2676 on first reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of the Leonard Farm Addition as R3A, medium-high-density district. And once again, we will hold a hearing and I will open the hearing. Are there any comments on this public hearing? And seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2676 on first reading as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Is, are IT person here?
Ed touched buttons again.
I was just trying to vote. It's back to this again, it keeps going to that. If it comes on, I'll be, there, see? I apologize, it's a, it's a new computer to me and we're still working the bugs out of it. Yes.
Once again, that passes with one abstention. Thank you. And oh, way. And I'll wave to Mayor Reed and see if he sees me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miles.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Frank. We will move on to item, excuse me, item number sixteen. City Council Consideration of the Seasons Subdivision Filing Number Two, amended preliminary plat. And for that, we have Mr. William Reese.
Thank you again. This is a subdivision application proposing to continue developing the undeveloped portions of the Seasons subdivision at the end of Oregon Street. There has been some preliminary plats in the past in this area, but the preliminary plats do expire after five years, since codes and standards do change. So we do require a re-review of any preliminary plat older than five years. This is located on Outlaw A of the Oregon Street South Boundary Line Adjustment and is approximately three point seven five acres in size. The property is zoned R-three A, medium-high-density district, and the proposed subdivision consists of twenty-five residential units made up of duplexes, triplexes, and sixplexes. One thing to note, this is also within the Seasons subdivision's second amended preliminary plat slash P D plan, which was recorded at reception number seven nine eight three seven five back in two thousand nine. That plan does permit some deviations, including the zero-foot side setbacks for residential lots, which allows the proposed units to be individually conveyable, such as the already existing townhomes in the Seasons. That being said, each individual building does need to be separated by at least ten feet. And then garages have a minimum twenty-foot front setback, as opposed to what would normally be fifteen feet. The P D also allows a developer to shift density, but the overall density requirements must still be met. That allows for some of the small, long, and skinny lots that you see on the plat, which I'll show in a minute. But the overall density still can't go above what is permitted by the zoning. We did bring this to the Planning Commission meeting on October ninth. They did vote to recommend approval of this preliminary plat, and it was a unanimous vote. The applicant will need to bring this back as a final plat once infrastructure improvements are completed. As with any subdivision, we do look to make sure the proposal is consistent with the master plan, subdivision regulations, and zoning regulations, including any planned developments for the property such as we have here. And then we also look at the relationship of the development to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, et cetera, availability of utilities, the compatibility with any existing natural environmental features, adjacent streets and traffic flow, emergency services protection, and the impacts on area schools. This area is shown as residential mixed density medium on the future land use map, which indicates that the property is appropriate for attached residential development or single-family or duplexes. The property is zoned R-three A, which allows for single-family homes, duplexes, or multifamily development as a use by right. Property is adjacent to property zoned R-two, low-density district, and R-four, high-density district. And then here is the plat itself. As usual, this first page is mostly plat notes and signature blocks. And then the second page shows the actual subdivision itself. As I mentioned, some of the lot lines that you see are very long and narrow, and that's because these are proposed townhome developments split up so that they can be individually conveyed. And also, as I said, density can be shifted due to the P D. This plat proposes twenty-five new residential units, as well as the dedication of the right-of-way and easements as required. And then the northern portion of the property is shown as an outlaw for future development. Staff finds that the preliminary plat is in compliance with the subdivision regulations, the comprehensive plan, and the Seasons subdivision's second amended preliminary plat slash P D plan. The proposal meets the intent of the R-three A, medium-high-density zoning district. Staff recommends the conditional approval of this plat with the standard condition that we recommend for all preliminary plats as shown on the screen. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I was concerned about the fact that it only has one road leading in to the property. Am I looking at it correctly?
Yep, so I'll pull up the plat here, and I see Scott stood up here. But as the preliminary plat shows, there is one road that goes into the property, and then there would be a temporary cul-de-sac at the end for any kind of emergency services requirements, such as a fire protection.
The other thing is that I noticed that there was only one road coming into that maybe on. Coming into the, well, I know, but I'm concerned right there, that one right.
There are two roads that go into the subdivision overall. There is Stanford Lane and Pennsylvania Street both go into the subdivision.
Yeah, it's, you come, I don't have my glasses, so I'm going to have to apologize.
One thing I'll add here, Ed, or Ed's, so the area that's shaded in yellow here, so it's actually intended, the original preliminary plat has that looping around to the top, so it'd go to Pennsylvania Avenue. That has since split up into two different property owners. An apartment complex has been eyeing that kind of brown shaded area just to the, you know, kind of between what's shaded yellow and green there. And they've expressed similar interest that they want that to loop as well. So indications are that that would all loop back around, so you'd get, as continued build-out occurs, you would get a looped roadway network through that whole quadrant of the subdivision, so.
I guess for public health and safety, I was just concerned that it only has just the one road coming in now. And if they go and develop it with the higher density, the townhouses and that sort of stuff, I have a concern for public health and safety, so.
Yep, and one thing I will say.
Without another road currently getting to that area, and you have Miami, and then you have the one off of it, the lane, it just, it just doesn't seem to me like, and then, of course, you have the lower densities on the other side of it. So I just, again, I'm just concerned about that. And then what about the water for fire flows and that sort of stuff?
I assume that the Fire Protection District has signed off on this.
Well, for public health and safety, I think it's a good question.
No, I'm not questioning your question, I'm saying I'm assuming the Fire District has signed off on this.
Yeah, and I can speak to that. So, yeah, the Fire District are one of the reviewers from both the access and safety standpoint. They're fully comfortable with this plan as proposed. And again, and that's if it stays in this condition forever, so that doesn't work out, that you get the loop. They're still okay with that from a long-term standpoint. But again, all indications are that that will eventually loop around. And then from a water standpoint, yeah, they have to demonstrate full capacity to meet fire flow requirements. That's been demonstrated out. And as part of a final plat, they also have to prove it out through hydrant flow tests to make sure that they not just got it on paper, but got it physically.
Okay, because I was just concerned, I don't want the city to be on the hook for establishing new water service out there.
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't allow subdivisions without proper fire protection. It would have stopped a long time ago before getting to this stage.
All right. Any other questions?
So, excuse me, William, but this is new to me. It's the first time I've seen a preliminary plat that has townhouses on it. So is that why they're these long skinny lots? Therefore, they don't have setbacks between them?
Correct. The plan would be to have those zero-foot setbacks to allow for the individual townhouse units to be individually conveyable so that they can, you know, be sold separately. That's what currently exists in the Seasons subdivision already. That's permitted in the underlying P D, those zero-foot side setbacks. Again, with the caveat that individual buildings have to be separated by at least ten feet, and that's for fire code protection. This is similar to some of the other preliminary plats we have recently seen, such as the Bear Creek Townhomes. And so, like I said, this is something that's permitted within the P D. And then I'll also point out, zoning allows for multifamily development as well, so the developer could, in theory, just build the townhouses without subdividing it. However, that would obviously not permit the developer to sell the units individually and would just have to be rented out.
Thank you.
Any, would you say this is kind of in support of affordable housing by being able to do this?
Certainly increases the housing supply. And, you know, it encourages more of the development of some of that missing middle housing that we've kind of discussed several times at some of these city council meetings. So, yes, I would say it helps to address the housing needs in the community. Obviously, it's not a silver bullet, but it's something.
And I, and Mr. Murphy might be able to answer that better than me, but I believe anytime it's brought into the city, there's a different fire code on water requirements?
Generally, so the Fire District regulates everything under the, I think it's like Appendix C of the International Fire Code. So that applies across the board. That being, so, you know, urban densities and stuff, a lot of times, you know, it's pretty straightforward, and it drives them to use that appendix. Where it does vary in the county, it's not necessarily just because they're in the county, but a lot of times, if there's a lot lower density, they can go to different provisions in the code to have a lower requirement. But in theory, the Fire District is applying the fire code, you know, universally across both the city and the county.
Just to point out, we're not annexing this, this is already part of the city, so it's not like we're bringing them in blind.
Anything further, Council? I will, for the record, ask for public comment, but seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Seasons subdivision filing number two, amended preliminary plat expressly conditioned upon city staff, ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinance, and municipal code provisions are met and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds. Please vote.
We have a second, second.
That passes four to one. All right, moving on, that was the last action item on the agenda. We'll move into staff reports. Are there any staff reports this evening? All right, if there are no staff reports, we'll move to the youth city council comments.
Hi, I'm Jordan Simo, and I'm the Secretary for Youth City Council. So recently, we're discussing a new, what's the word? Well, we have a project and, what's the word? Yeah, proclamation. We recently had a work session to discuss ideas for a new one throughout this year. We have some really exciting ideas, but we're still deciding. So I think we're all really excited to pick an idea, and we have some really good ones this year. I'd also like to discuss the upcoming conference we're going to next week in Tampa Bay, Florida. We're going to the National League of Cities Summit Youth Conference. It's pretty much allows us as counselors to engage in workshops, meet civic leaders, and have hands-on experience in local government operations. It's a really good opportunity to increase those leadership skills and to learn new things from professionals. We're really excited, we're leaving this Sunday. And the Monday, we have a really fun opportunity to go to Universal together. I think it's a really good opportunity for us to grow connections as a council, and I know we're all really grateful for the opportunity. Then that Tuesday, we'll be heading to Tampa Bay Convention Center, and that's when we'll start the conference and go through multiple sessions and activities. And that'll continue throughout Tuesday to Wednesday, and we will be heading back to Montrose on Thursday. On behalf of me and, like, all of the counselors I know who are going, we're really grateful for the opportunity, and we're really excited for all of the things that we're going to learn on this conference. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for coming tonight. And thanks for helping me with the proclamation and award, you did a great job. We'll move on to any city council comments.
I just want to make a comment. Over the weekend, Mata helped sponsor a Courage for Cove benefit to raise funds for his cancer treatments and for his trips. And it was, in my opinion, it was quite successful. I would like to thank all the participants and the businesses that contributed to the benefit to help this young man and his family. And again, I believe the council participated by purchasing some tickets for a thing, and I'd like to thank the council for that. They did a great job. I was there selling popcorn, or giving away popcorn, so it was very active.
Great, glad it went so well. Other comments? Well, if not, it appears that we have completed, the council has completed the work of the agenda, and we will stand adjourned.